I hereby call the meeting, the August meeting of the City Council of Washington, Georgia to order. If we might stand, I'm going to give a brief invocation myself this evening. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the city of Washington. We thank you for we have a form of government where the people elect their representatives and they can have open discussion and to meet the consensus of the people to the governing of the city. We pray, Lord, for your guidance and your wisdom, that in our discussions tonight and in our decisions, we are guided by what will be best for the greater good of the city of Washington. In your name we pray. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Larry Hill, could you lead us to the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And we go back quite some way here tonight to get these minutes approved. Wanda DeMar, City Clerk, has pulled them together from December, January, February, well, actually, several dates. Everyone should have a copy of them with your packet. Do we have any discussion about the minutes?
The minutes that we asked for, should have been, should have had them back in June. And we just given them today when we're walking into the session. I don't know anybody that has any minutes and we're just not giving them. What was the whole, we didn't get those five days back when we requested.
Well, I really can't speak to that.
Maybe he can speak to it. He's running. Why we didn't get these minutes when we asked for them?
There have been several conversations around that. And if we go back to the June meeting, there was a request for minutes that had actually already been approved and everybody already had and clarified that. What you have today is a courtesy copy of those minutes that were prior approved, plus the June minutes from the June meeting.
It was still to have in our box after the last meeting. Why weren't they in the box? So we didn't get them till just now.
I don't know that I can speak to that. I don't know that I've, you say that was supposed to be-
You said that the last meeting, that we requested these minutes and it's going to be in the box. We just gave them tonight. They was never in the box. You don't know nothing about that.
I'm going to ask our City Clerk to speak to that. Wanda, you want to speak to that?
The minutes have been in the box. I put them in there earlier today. No one gave me a time restraint as to whether they had them in there.
Which minute was in the box today?
In your box at the office?
Which minutes? The one that we requested at the last meeting wasn't in the box until when?
This morning.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The minute that was requested last month, the month, the last meeting we had, that was going to be in the box the next day of that Friday, why weren't they in the box?
They were in the box today. I've got the recording of the last minute and no one ever mentioned a date for them to be in the box.
On your minutes you got here today, it says that they requested minutes. And it was, and I personally said it happened that week.
You did request them, yes, you did. But you didn't say they need to be in there today, tomorrow, or-
Yes, I requested that week before we left to go to-
You're welcome to listen to my recording of the meeting. Come, I'll listen to it again today.
I listened to the video that we have out. So I've seen the video of it.
Councilman Cullors, let's move on here. This is not constructive. The minutes are here. We're sorry that I-
Man, I think I have the right to ask a question.
You've asked the question. It's been answered.
You interrupted my speech.
I am, I'm going to move on. We're moving on.
That's disrespectful.
Well, it might be disrespectful. We're moving on. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, now, are we talking about just the June minutes now? We're talking about all the way back to December. We had previously approved the minutes from December.
We've already approved the prior.
It's just the June minutes we're talking about approval here. All right, Councilman Danner?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, we're voting to pass the minutes, appropriate minutes.
From Jim. Second. All right, any further discussion?
Discussion. June minutes are already incorrect because I voted against, you said I abstained from them. I voted against. Minutes was approved on May 23rd. I voted against, I didn't abstain. So the minutes already wrong.
All right, well, we can certainly make that change. All right, any further edits?
I'd like to ask the attorney to second.
First of all, let me, Wanda, go ahead, say it.
We discussed this earlier today and any corrections you want, if you do that during the meeting or right after the meeting, give them to me. They'll be changed tomorrow and I'll reemail them to you. But I'd like to leave here with them because that way I know I have them.
Have you got a question, City Attorney?
Yes. City Attorney, to go on with this meeting, we have a councilman that doesn't live here in this county. Is it right for him to go on anything at this meeting in this town? I mean, no?
I object to the question.
I'm talking to the city attorney.
Well, you're making, you're making a statement that's not correct. There's no evidence about what you're saying there. Councilman Wagner, you want to speak to that? I think you're talking to Council Wagner, am I correct?
If you're talking about me, I still live at 309.
Your house is there, but you don't live there.
I do live there.
You're just like the other councilmen.
I'm there.
Go ahead, like I said, there's goals when I'm coming around.
It's all right, I'm there.
Okay. Let's move on. I think we've had a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the June 12 meeting. Can I have a vote, all in favor of the June 12 minutes? I subject Councilman Cullors' correction about the, about the previous minutes. All in favor, please show your hands.
Well, I got a question.
All right.
Please forgive me because I'm sitting down, I'm trying to look at minutes and trying to make sure they are correct. There was discussion at our last meeting as it pertained to the electric policy. And I think that was when Councilman Anderson brought it back up. And it was voted on, and it was voted on to go back to the original policy before he abstained the first time. And it passed. So it was a policy, when he abstained, it changed, next meeting, he brought it back up again, and it went back. But it also says in these minutes, it said Councilman Anderson, I'm on, I'm on the-
You're on the June minutes?
I'm sorry, I'm on the September.
Yes, yeah, this is June.
We're talking about June now, when I'm talking about September.
This is June.
Yeah, minutes, okay. So how come nobody's put the other months of minutes there?
They've already, they've already been approved.
Those were, those were approved already.
Okay, well, the last meeting that we had, I don't see that in here as well. It's the June, at the June meeting, the motion.
You don't see the current names?
Yeah, I see it right. Okay. Yeah, I don't see the, when we talked about the electric policy, the conversation about the electric policy, they came back up.
Did, can we have a vote on it?
Yeah, we vote on it because it went back to the original policy that was-
That was in May.
That was in May.
That would be in the May minutes. This is the June minutes.
Now, I brought it up later then, voting. It was brought up then because Councilman Cullors was going to bring it back up again. And that's what he asked on his minutes, that's what he had on his agenda for, his meeting was the electric policy.
I'm saying, but we're not talking about that now. We're just talking about approval of the June minutes.
Yes, sir. What I'm saying is that conversation that we had, that we took action on the electric policy, should have been into the June minutes. And it's not in.
We voted on it in May.
I think it was in May.
We voted in May for sure.
So we voted on it twice, so you said the second time-
Well, we voted on April and April and May, both months.
Well, there might have been some discussion, but no action taken.
Right.
All right, I'd like a vote now on approval of the June minutes, please. I think we had, we had a show in, all in favor, show your hands, please. Three, four, all opposed. Two opposed. All right, the minutes are approved, June minutes are approved. All right, next is the meeting agenda for tonight's meeting. You have the agenda before you. Do we have any comments on it or can we get the agenda approved as is?
I'd like to add personnel to that.
All right, that'd be on the executive session, correct? Okay.
A motion to approve the agenda as an adding one.
A motion to approve the agenda for the August 14 meeting. Do I have a second? Second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the agenda, please raise your hand. All right, it passes, looks like it's five to one. Okay. All right, agenda's approved. Okay, next is public forum for folks who want to address the council. And Josh Gordon, I think that you're on that, do you want to address the council? Thank you.
Just wanted to come back, tell everybody how it was going. We have a nice plaque for y'all, to get to y'all from us. So far done in a couple of weeks, finally after we did the ribbon cutting, this and that, we're averaging 12 to 15 right now, four and in, and we had two new ones signed today. So a lot of people's coming through, hearing the word. Everybody seems to be putting the word out really good. We had two salvations week before last, so that's good because we do Bible study there as well. So already, to me, God's working and we're working in it. So I want to thank y'all for what y'all did, stepped up and letting us use the building. It's been a real blessing. We've done some repairs to the building, we've done some things to help make it nicer. And I just wanted to come out and say thank y'all for what y'all done and what y'all did for us because it's definitely helped.
Thank you. I might mention that Josh presented me at the ribbon cutting, presented me with a nice plaque to the Washington City Council, thanking his forward support. And I, unfortunately, forgot to bring it. So it'll be at the next meeting and we'll mount it on the wall in City Hall. But we thank you, Josh.
Definitely, it's been a blessing. Like I said, we do it for free, so there's been a lot of people in town really step up too and donate to it on, not me, but like the kids, of course, we talked about how to have the license and stuff to do it, the boxing's free, but they require to have a license for insurance. There's some people in town who truly step, it helps some of these kids that don't have. So it's been a real blessing so far. I want to thank the town, the city, county, everybody stepping up. I appreciate it, it means a lot.
Everybody, thank you.
When is it open?
Yeah, thank you.
When do you get it open?
We're open Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from four to seven. Please come out and check it out. I know you come out, Andy's come out, Mayor's come out.
Four to seven.
Matt's going four to seven, yes. You've been out saying it, it's been a real blessing, so.
And you got a workout program for people that need a little weight?
Yeah, I do. Bring some oxygen and we'll get it done. Ask Matt, Matt's going to move it.
Get a lot of sweat.
It's been a real blessing. Y'all got some real talent in this town. Some of the kids that's coming is really showing some stuff. Someone's being hard headed and they're learning lessons off that too, so it's been a real blessing.
That is for boys and girls and adults, right?
Boys and girls, yes, we have, we have females and males that run out from people.
Male, female, and adult.
And adults, yeah, the adults, anything that comes from the adults, of course, they have that same license, but they have to pay to come and that money goes right back to the kids, just like the people donating. Somebody shows up, can't afford the license, the license is provided for.
I just want to say one more comment since everybody has. I'm a huge fan of Josh. He's a blessing in Washington, he really is. He don't have to do all that he does. And the biggest factor that most people may or may not miss, that, and he's a minister, I mean, he ministers with these kids. It's a lot deeper than just boxing. And I've seen some kids personally that have been touched by and headed in the right direction, so he's a pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh.
That's all I want to say, thank y'all again. I got to get back, I got 15 kids.
Very good, great.
I'll take care of it.
All right, the other sign up for public comment was Tanya Goodwin. Come on, Tanya, come on.
Good evening, everyone. As introduced, I'm Latonya Goodwin. Thank you, Mayor DeGaulle and other City Council members. I am here to discuss workforce development. It's going to be short. I'm at WorkSource East Central, Georgia. We are primarily located in Thompson, Georgia. We serve nine counties throughout the CSRA and Wilkes County and the city of Washington is one of our recipients. It's federal grant funds. And what we do, what I see that you guys are invested in is your community, as I can tell by you taking the time with Josh. And it's about transforming lives. And that's what we do at East Central Georgia Consortium. Recently, however, we have been under somewhat of a, I would just call it a hostile takeover, so to speak, where we were created to serve the rural communities. However, there's an option on the table to merge us with Augusta. Several years ago, this occurred. And our local elected officials said, no, we need these funds here in our rural communities. And with that, a nonprofit, that's what I work for, is a nonprofit, was established. So that option is again on the table. And currently, we are served as our fiscal agent as Lincoln County. However, Lincoln County has decided they no longer would like to be our fiscal agent. So I've had discussions with Macio, Mayor DeGaulle, and as well as Jerry DeBian about this body becoming our fiscal agent. The fiscal agent task really is a pass-through entity. You receive funds from that federal grant and we pretty much do all the work. We've had a clear, low-risk financial audit through all of the years that we've been in business. This past February, when we had our state audit, we received zero findings and zero observations. That is something that is unheard of in the world because they come looking for things. Our performance has been outstanding. Although we receive less than $500,000 less than our counterpart in Augusta, we serve just as many participants. In some areas, we serve more. Also, for our performance, we're number one in the state when it comes to median earnings. And our performance just speaks for itself. First of all, my background, I'm retired area manager from Georgia Power. My background is electrical engineering. And I'm all about bringing innovation into workforce. That's why I, as I say, I left a good job in the city to come do this work because I am passionate. It's what saved me, is workforce development. So, and that's what we want to do for this community and having conversations with Macio and the need that is here. Sometimes, what we have done in the past is fund fully the Family Connections Communities and Schools under Amethyst Wind. That was funded through our youth program. But we want to expand and do more than just youth, adult, and dislocated worker. We were here before with the help of Macio, with Athens Tech, and the mobile welding lab that we have. We just want more of a presence. We help you guys with nursing, we've helped the government, especially Washington County government, and this government itself. Your City Clerk was within the help of our, our program. So, I mean, it does wonders. So I'm just asking, hoping that there's, you know, that agreement here from this body.
Mayor, Council, please forgive me and Jerry and City Manager and Ms. Goodwin. We had some late week conversations, week before last, and there was kind of a, trying to get an understanding of what the MOU would look like, whether it needs to come from us or whether it needs to come from WorkSource. And that's how you guys really don't have the information in front of you guys as far as what we need to be discussing as far as when it comes to WorkSource. So basically, what Ms. Goodwin is asking this body, would we, I know we can't go ahead and be improper for the vote because we don't have the backing, Mr. Frontage, but would there be a consensus of us wanting to have a WorkSource becoming the fiscal agent for WorkSource because Lincoln County has turned it, they're noticing that they normally want to be the fiscal agent. And they have until October, the-
October 25th is that-
October 25th is that deadline to have another fiscal agent in place. So in order for Ms. Goodwin to do what she needs to do with the older board, mayor that you sit on, because it has to be approved by that board that you sit on. And it actually, once it's approved by them, it has to go to the state. The state has to vet us about whether or not we can handle a grant like that, which we've proven that we can handle HUD grants and grants of big dollars and multitude. And once they vet us, then if it's the wishes of the older board, then we would become that fiscal agent. And sidebar conversation, we also have been talking with Ms. Goodwin about starting affiliate WorkSource program or them moving from Thompson to Washington as well. So no longer will we be at Athens Tech offering people a GED, but we can say, hey, you can get your GED in this room and then you can go over here and learn a technical skill and you can also get a job up under Ms. Goodwin in WorkSource.
Well, let's do this, Ms. Goodwin, if you can give us a little more background information about this and how it would work and what the, I guess, the imposition or burden would be on City Attorney.
May I add a comment to that?
Yes.
I first became aware of WorkSource Georgia in the year of COVID when they had this grant fund for displaced workers. And all of you all will know now, the person we found through that was Wind. She started, actually funded by that program. And so that led to someone that is now a full-time employee with us. And it really became a pathway for her to get out of public housing and into her own home now. But all that to say, it really opened my eyes about what a resource like this can do for a community. So I'm a huge fan of what they, what they can do. And I think it bears exploring anyway, so we can determine, and I'm partial, but I feel like it would be good if we, down the road, if we all agree, we could be the home base for this here in Wilkes County. And then try to partner with the county as well. They've got a fabulous facility at Athens Tech and maybe we could work something out. But we could do more, more fact gathering and come back, come back with a proposal at the next meeting.
Let's maybe panel this in at our September meeting then. Okay.
Is there, if it won't be so improper, can we just at least let her know that we are interested in doing it? So that way she won't really be wasting time on other communities because there's nine other counties that are involved in the WorkSource divisions that we need to, if we're going to be the ones, then she needs to be at least go back and let them know that she has somebody that wants to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Are you looking for a letter of intent or a letter that we're interested?
Yes.
Because of the timeline that you're working with?
Yes.
And as our administrator said, definitely we know all about your program, definitely and also. So if you're looking for a letter, I don't see any reason why I make a motion to give a letter of our interest to the agency to look and to gather more information about it. But just definitely a letter of intent to partner with WorkSource.
Well, I guess my only hangup is that I don't feel like I know enough about it or understand it enough. That's what I'm concerned.
May suggest this. Maybe we can accomplish both. I bet if I pull together a draft proposal, I get it to you and all the council, you all would have time to look over, talk among yourselves, and we might be able to do some sort of a proxy vote or a special call, something that could be ratified at the September meeting. But that way, to your point too, Councilman Mahoney, it would give an early indication of, yes, we're at least interested in exploring this or no, this may be problematic. But this might allow us to move, to move ahead.
Yeah.
But we wouldn't have to vote on it tonight. If y'all are, if y'all are okay with that, I'll get something to you within the next couple of days that you could start to react to.
Well, I just have an extra question, Ms. Goodwin, is September meeting, which will be the second Monday in September, that's enough time for you to do what you need to do?
I will work around those that schedule. It is not me, it is the state of Georgia. I will tell you that the state currently is without a grant administrator, so that is a concern. And then the director, she's expecting. And her due date is a month before, I think October 17. So you never know pregnancy. So that's what she's concerned about. And then there, the state will have to vet the city to make certain. But I will, I do appreciate your consideration and I understand the time constraints that you're under and I appreciate the option.
Mr. Mayor, if I may too, since you serve on the board that ultimately oversees this, it would be proper for the council to read the background over the next few days and provide you with their vote of consensus support. And you could simply voice that as a member of that board in a letter. I don't know that we have to formalize any sort of a vote here, so much as you could take that feedback and note if you have strong consensus, you could reflect that in your letter as a, as an appointed member of that board.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think she just wants a consensus of the board members here. Do y'all know anything about workforce? Are y'all wins this? I mean, show a hand if you are. That's all she has for running.
I got a question, because I don't know very much about it. It sounds like a nice program. And a couple of questions. So what area would we be over since we're taking over Lincoln's position?
So you will be the fiscal agent for the nine counties that we serve for workforce. We currently have nine. And that role, the roles and responsibility of a fiscal agent is that you primarily just, someone here, we pay about close to 40, 40,000 or so, 3% of the funds that we receive. And that usually allows a county to hire a part-time person or supplement someone's salary. Each Monday, we provide you the reimbursements that we have for the expenses. That person, we do all the documentation. We look over, we send it to the state. The state just provides us the money after the documents have been approved. We cannot, we do not keep cash in hand. It's all through reimbursement after that drawdown. The other thing that you do is that you sign off on the actual grant awards. So we receive grant awards in, around April and also around in July. And honestly, that's what the fiscal agent, now I do want to tell you, there are some downsides, but we've never experienced these downsides as a fiscal agent. And I want to be completely transparent and honest. The federal law states that the locally elected officials are responsible for any disallowed costs. In our entire tenure as an agency, we've never had any disallowed costs and don't intend to. So what that means, and we, and as Macio was speaking of, the MOU, we will draft an MOU that we will come to a consensus about what should be in that MOU. Currently, what we have in our MOU is that, because we also subcontract our, our money like we did with Family Connections. So if Amethyst had had a disallowed cost, that would have borne the responsibilities ultimately of the locally elected officials. Now, I mentioned nine counties, but within those nine counties are nine cities. So that pro rata amount really gets down, I think, Washington, you're probably at 2% if there's a disallowed cost. Who's bearing the brunt of that is Columbia County. They are the largest county and they will pay for that disallowed cost ultimately. But we have layers prior to them paying for the disallowed cost. Again, we'll go after the offending party if it's a sole contractor. Then we have the insurers. Then also, it's my role as director, what I've been doing is leveraging our nonprofit status. We've not done that in the past. So I have a little bit of, I have a kitty, so to speak. So we will pay if there's any issue with us. Then, of course, the fiscal agent could pay, but most of the time, the responsibility that I've seen in other areas has been on the locally elected officials. So that's the drawback.
Let's go ahead and move on from this.
I just have one more quick question. Do you know why Lincoln, the Lincoln decided not to be able to do the fiscal?
Matthew, it is a, it is a, no, I do not know why. I can be, I can honestly say I do not know why. When there was a census emerged 10 years ago, and that was with the region commission, that merge, I was just, I was just a board chair, I think I was just a board member at that time. We, the rural, local elected officials said, no, we do not want to be with Augusta. 10 years later, we have a better performance, a better outcome than we had before. As I talked to another local elected official that voted upon it, I honestly said, the only difference is me. So I do not know why. And, and that's their choice. And unfortunately, I like to move forward and not look backwards. So whatever his reason is, I know the work that we do is worth it and is valuable to stay here in our community.
Mr. Mayor, if you could, we need to move on now, Larry. We do cover this enough. If you could, fill us with some of this information, we'll get around the council, we'll talk about it all later. We need to move on.
And I'll stay here.
And I'll, I don't want to argue about this, but this is a business meeting. And if you got something that you need to do or somewhere you need to go, we got a mayor for town that can handle this meeting. Here we is, we talking about bringing jobs and resources to the city of Washington. If you sit on the board on it, you barely even go to the meeting, that's why you don't know what's going on now.[1799.12] She's trying to explain not only to you, but the council.
That's enough. We're moving on. Thank you, Latonya. Appreciate it. We're moving on to the next thing.
Trying to manipulate her and benign her about what we're talking about.
Councilman Mahoney, would you stop please? That's not all what's going on. Let's move on to the next item. We need you to please. Latonya, thank you very much and we look forward to getting that information from you.
Know what's going on.
All right. Let's see. Next, our mayor discussion topics. I'm very pleased to report that we have a signed development agreement for the development and sale of real estate with the WA Scors Construction Company. So that was signed on August 11th. They expect to step up their process in, in the, this, this involves the city's seventeen acres on Gordon Street. And so we'll be having future conversations with Mr. Gross about proposed plans and how that will move forward from there.
Questions?
Yes.
We sold Gross's property?
I haven't sold anything.
What you just said that was?
It's an agreement that we would, an agreement to develop and sell a property. No final numbers yet on anything, but it's, it's an understanding with him that we want to work with him to, to develop, work out a plan for the development site and sale of the site.
The council voted on this?
Council voted unanimously to enter a memorandum of understanding with the WA Scors Company. And our city attorney drafted, drafted the agreement for us, which I forwarded to Mr. Gross. He signed it and I signed it. And what?
What was that?
We, we, we agreed to get a, a deal done with Mr. Gross. We cannot sell city property. It has to be put out for R and B. So let's make sure, cause we talking about these minutes.
Right.
Let's make sure that we are saying it correctly. We entered for Bill Gross to come in and look to develop Gordon Street property. We are not, we have not entered into any agreement monetarily of selling the property with Mr. Gross.
I agree. This is all, it's all just a general agreement at this point. There's no, no details still to be worked out. All right, then let's see. We're very excited about the MEAC has arranged for members of the city council to tour Plan Vogel. And as you may have seen in the news, the, the, let's see. Vogel three and Vogel four nuclear reactors are coming on, Vogel three is online now. Vogel four expected to come online after the turn of the year. Very, very exciting news for Washington and really for the state. But we're going to be, various of city council members will be led on a tour on August 23rd. I think it's going to be very, very interesting. Looking forward to it. Find out, welcome attorney Tom Watkins is here from the Fleming and Nelson Law Firm. Tom, welcome to, and help us tonight as city attorney.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right. All right, let's see. We had council, action topics. Councilman Mahoney, you've got a couple of items. Do you want to go ahead?
Yes, Mayor, council. I really like to go through the discussion, cause some of these discussions does lead into a, a vote. So, okay, can I go into discussion?
You want to do discussion before, okay, all right, you can go to discussion. That's all.
Okay, so through the relationship with the housing authority to get to, we are noticing that there's a, a astronomical number of homelessness that is starting to surface in our community. And I think one of the families was actually staying in Washington, Fort Washington Park that was behind the courthouse. They was able to get that family placed. However, since then, there's been other families that have came up. One lady is sleeping in her car. She, she, she gets a social security check. But we just don't have the capacity to actually, you know, place these people in apartments. So what I was asking, Zina Zaran, who is the interim executive director for the housing authority, was, was there any programming that was out there that we could look to investigate homelessness identified? And how do we move forward with actually servicing the community when it comes to homelessness? And she brought up that there was some continual care and there was some great money that was actually out there. So what I was asking this body was to maybe form together a committee and let the ministers in the community formulate this committee. Dealing with homelessness is not a political issue. It's not black or white. But just as we just had this prayer by our mayor about our implication, we all should be about our fathers' business. And if our father was here, homelessness would be an issue and he'd be trying to find a resolve for it. So Mayor, what I'm asking this body to do is to formulate a committee and let it be both from District One and District Two. And let the ministers start to examine and identify homelessness, how we look at homelessness and how we're going to start to address it and how we're going to identify it. I think too many times we put the burden of coming up with solutions on this body when we should have the community being involved with chartering course as well.
Right. Clear with that. Comments, council members? Councilor Dennis?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I'm really aware a whole lot of things in Washington. Obviously, it doesn't take many to be a big concern. So I'm, especially getting some ministers and churches involved. That's a good idea.
I'd just like to mirror or ditto what Matt said there. There's a lot of programs out there and I'm no expert on it, but it's a lot. I remember one of the previous discussions a few months ago, one was the CSRA Economic Opportunity Authority. We talked about how we can get more involved with them. I think it's a great idea. I think we, we, and especially to define homelessness. And it's a federal program, state program. And so I think it's a good thing for us to be on the same sheet of music and understanding and really get to identify where the problem is. See how we can collectively bring solutions to it. I've seen nothing, but you know, it's a good idea to make.
And I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Larry, go ahead. I likewise think that this is a good opportunity for Washington to show some togetherness and support unity between the two districts to pull this together. As we know, there is a shortage of housing, affordable housing also. And so definitely when you're talking about the word homeless, there's a lot of people don't like to use that word anymore, but we still have it existed in our community. So I think this is a great opportunity for this body to put our arms around and figure out how we can work collaboratively with the housing authority and other agencies, not only the housing authority, other agencies also that make this a reality. So I'm, I'm all for it.
Let's, I, I agree that, I think former committee would be worthwhile to investigate into this further. Can I have a couple of rep, of a couple of councilmen from District One and District Two to volunteer for this?
Mayor, I would like to do if, if District One could make a recommendation of at least up to three people committed that you can appoint this continual care board, continual care committee or the continual care board.
Okay.
And District Two to make the same two to three ministers that's out of the street.
So and, and these would be citizens of our community as opposed to members of the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
You don't have to decide on those names tonight. It's just an agreement to move forward.
Okay. All right, good. All right. What next, Councilman Mahoney?
Yes, sir. City administrator, I know I had some conversation with you about the housing authority. Was we able to pull up that agreement back when Ames Barnett was, when he was the mayor about the money that was allotted to the houses? I know this.
It was one thousand.
It was one thousand.
Yes, it was.
Which item are you, are you looking at?
Well, I was, so if you look at the discussion sheets that I had here.
Yeah, I see it.
I was talking about reallocating twenty-five, originally I thought it was ten thousand dollars that we gave to the housing authority when it entered that lawsuit. And it had the money going to the lawsuit. So I was asking twenty-five hundred dollars of that money be allocated to the federal affordable connectivity.
Connectivity program?
Program, yes, sir. But by now it was ten thousand, then that definitely changed that number. So I was trying affordable, let me table the affordable connectivity program to next one.
Table that, okay. Go ahead.
One question.
Yes.
Was there an award made for that? I know I was on the housing authority at that time. And we as an entity could not, we had to get the city to sign off on it. And a thousand dollars to enter the lawsuit had to be, we had to involve. So I think we asked the city to sign it and I, I guess the city gave a thousand. I don't know who gave the thousand. But it was, we were supposed to get somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, possibly as high as that. There was two lawsuits. We missed the first entry. We got the second one, but I didn't hear whether there was any award made at all. Do you know what the award was like?
I don't know. I don't know the amount, but I know that about a month ago, Ms. Zina came to city hall, presented a check. And we had asked, what is this for? So she was catching us up on that history and it was a thousand dollars. So they had gotten an award and they were returning the one thousand dollars that the city had put up. So we're whole as far as the one thousand dollars.
Okay. So we really need to know, it's the guy.
One sixteen.
One sixteen.
One sixteen.
All right, Councilman Mahoney?
I want to table the affordable connectivity, connectivity program. Closer reached a book of pool this year. So unbeknownst to me that there was an issue with lifeguards at the, at the Reach J book pool. I think the pool director did early on start to say, hey, we having problems trying to find lifeguards. We only have two. It's going to take five or seven in order to open and operate the pool. At that time, I want to say, it was like, maybe like first of June.
It was, mid-May, I think. Yeah.
So we began to really, with the help of the city administrator, we began to call Mr. Wilkinson, talk to him about, hey, what's going on with the pool? How can we help? He began to tell us about how many people it was going to take and also the lifeguards we have to go through the training program. And at that point, that's when I got involved and I began to ask the community, was there any lifeguards that was already certified in the community? We had one young man that came up and then we were trying to get him in to be one lifeguard. But the problem was he used to lifeguard at Wild Adventures and his, his lifeguard certification had just went out. So he would have to be recertified. But we ended up coming up with eighteen names. Tanisha Walker was a great help in the community. She graduated from high school and she's very involved with the youth as well. But we was able to come up with eighteen names, afford it, the names, the emails, the addresses, the phone notes, all the information that he would need to make contact. And then I think there's maybe like two weeks later, I followed back up to find out, you know, hey, where we at? We got kids going for the training. And that's when the director said that he didn't believe that it would be good to open the pool this year. And that it wouldn't be open long enough to get pretty much any, any use out of it. I do want to address the community, the community know there was no ill intent from this body not to open the pool. You know, it's just, you know, with a timing issue of when it came to our attention that he wasn't going to be able to come up with the lifeguards. You know, we was left at bay with trying to find a way to make happen. City administrator, what you mean you can't?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, may I ask please? I tip my hat to Greg Wilkinson. He has done a phenomenal job. And ran the pool great last summer. He brought at the end of the summer last year, several improvements that we needed to make, upgraded some equipment, some new pumps, new cover. We spent a modest amount with some winterizing maintenance. He came several times during the winter to help treat and clean the pool. We ordered new pool chemicals. So we worked all through the winter, assuming that pool was going to open this summer. Went into it with that full assumption. And the lifeguard, he paid pretty well. I think it was sixteen to eighteen dollars an hour, depending on experience. And he started in October and by mid-spring, he was saying, there is a nationwide shortage of lifeguards. It's just hard to find. Brett Hill, you even had, I think you shook a few bushes too. We all made attempts. But at the end of the day, I respect that when, after all of that work, Greg said, if I can get four, five or six of these eighteen through a class, class will be in the next week or two. By the time we get them out, the pool will be open, maybe ten days and then school will start. So he, and he was right to say, there is a point where you have to just cut your loss and say, despite everybody's best intent, we cannot operate the pool without a lifeguard. And made the decision, and I concurred with him, that probably best to just not start up and run for ten days only and close back down again. So that, and that's how, and that's how we arrived at where we are.
So I just wanted, you know, officially put that information out as far as what came about with the pool. And that was, you know, we did try to find these lifeguards, but hopefully these same names will do a better job of next year. Getting the word out a whole lot earlier and maybe we can get these people in the class early on. So that leads me to my other action item that I have on for agenda for tonight, which was the development of a splash pad at Reach J Booker Park. Since we did not open up a swimming pool this year, that money was already allocated for the swimming pool. I would also like for us to put together another committee. You know, there was a lot of people talking about, you know, why the pool wasn't open. Yeah, it could have, it could have been a better job. But I think this is when we should be challenging the community to get involved. So I would like to allocate, if it's wishes of the council, the money that was utilized for the swimming pool this year that did not open. Set that money aside to put towards the formation and the design, when we design the implementation of a splash pad at Reach J Booker Park. And, you know, with having the conversation with the city manager about the splash pad, he did also express that, hey, maybe there may be an opportunity to open up to a splash pad down at Simpson Park as well. But at least I want to have a committee put together to start looking at what the cost would be, what the design would be. Cause too many times we make the decision here and the real technical information that needs to go out about engineering, how much the cost is going to be, where the money is going to come from. The community has left out that loop, how much it's going to cost to operate. So I feel that we get them on board early on in the designing and implementation phase and deciding what it's going to cost, what it's going to look like. At least by the time we start to have budget discussions in October, they'll be already formulated. And they know this ain't something that you can do just like this, you know.
Councilman Mahoney, who, do you have in mind who might serve on that, this committee? I think it's a good thing, but should it be council members? Should we look for engineers within the community that could help us with this?
I, I think we should start with the public works committee that we already have formed.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you're right about that.
All those guys are already in that business. And they'll be the ones that'll be doing a lot of, maybe, maybe potentially some of the install working with whoever we can potentially.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's ask.
Just to add to, Councilman Dennis, I think we also should include Parks and Recreation. Mr. Wilber is doing a good job over there. And so that is a continuation of Parks and Rec. So they should have some insight in it also.
Worth a while. So Parks and Rec or the Parks and Rec, I'm sorry.
Public Works.
Public Works.
We already have.
Parks and Rec. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's ask them with, with.
Mayor.
Yes.
If it, if it would be, if, if it would be not too much to ask, could we also allocate one person from the community to work with that board? Ie being Public Works and Parks and Rec. So that way if information needs to go back out, they're part of the community, they can say, hey, this is what's going on. Yeah, this is true. No, this is not true. And we can make that recommendations as a committee board member at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. All right, what next?
The jury, the discussion about the jury board meeting, follow up, I'm going to scratch that.
What's that?
Electric policy range. So I can only imagine when it comes to the customers of the city, as we sit here and struggle with the electric policy, whether it's this or whether it's that. They get caught in between whether or not there is the new policy or the old policy. And just for the record, I went back and looked at a picture of the old agenda. And it is on the June meeting and Councilor Cullen, you actually brought it up. And I will share that, I will share that with everybody. So it was on the June agenda. I will share that, I'll share that picture with everybody so that you actually see it. But. that, I'll share that picture with everybody so they can actually see it. But I think a lot of citizens get caught up in between whether or not the policy is one thing, or the policy is something else. So what I'm asking right now, if you look at your election bill, at the very bottom of the bill, in fine print, that's where you see what the actual policy is. That's where you see when you start to incur fees, what the penalties of those fees are. What I'm asking is that maybe we can put that policy somewhere else where it stands out a little bit bolder, so they can actually see it. And hopefully, you know, we get to a public, and reach some type of consensus about the policy. And if it doesn't get changed, it doesn't get changed. But at least the customers know that as of now, the policy is A, B, and C, X, Y, Z. So it's just a change in the position of what the electric policy is. That's all I have.
Right. Now, did you want to go to your action topics, Councilman Houghton, as well?
Yes, so we already did the action discussion.
Okay. Okay. All right, Greg. All right, let's see. Councilman Cullors, you had some discussion topics.
I also had an action topic.
Okay.
Let's start with the action topic. First, we had voted in that January or December of July, did we give a discount? Have we given a discount for electric rates yet?
We permanently rolled it back. That was a year ago that we did the July.
We don't do it in January or December.
That was only for 2022. We did the, you know, we did the big one in July, and another one in December. The third one was the seven percent rollback in January. Right. So we made it, we made it permanent.
Permanent, overall for the whole year.
Correct.
So in 2022, we did it two times.
Two times.
July and January. Right. And that was a rebate, basically, to every customer.
And then the third was when we voted in January, then to roll it back permanently.
Reduction in the electric rate, seven percent.
That's correct.
Okay. With that said, I'm going to make a motion that we go back to seven percent for all customers, seven percent after the fifteen. Let's make that a form of a motion to do with the other policy, the hundred fifty and a hundred fifty-five dollars. That's my motion.
Please state again.
Can you state it quite, quite clearly?
I'm making a motion to go back to seven percent only, seven percent on electric rate only. We were with the hundred fifty dollars and the fifty-five dollars.
So you're proposing to increase it, back up to seven percent?
There used to be just seven percent after the fifteen. Seven percent is only electric rate after the fifteen, that's it. We don't have those other charges. I'm doing with all those other charges. Like I normally do, I'm going to continue this until the end of the year. So that's my motion, to go back to the regular seven percent charge that we charge on electric rate.
All right, let me just say this. We've talked about this topic several times over the past months, and I really don't think we need to get back into it in any kind of detail here. I'd like to, frankly, as much as we've discussed this in the past, I'd like to just get a book on this.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I second, I second the motion. All right, motion seconded. All right, so the motion is to, to roll, that seven percent rollback, you want to eliminate that and add seven percent back to the electric rates?
My motion is to go back to seven percent only for late fees only. They go off the fifty-five dollars and a hundred fifty dollars. That's my motion.
Okay. All right, does everybody understand the motion?
No, no.
Go ahead.
Can I just see, I'm trying to clarify. So you're saying that instead of, in lieu of having the hundred fifty dollar deposit and the fifty-five dollar late fee, you're saying if you're late, just pay the seven percent?
Yes.
And that's after they get cut off, or whatever? I mean, what?
Yes.
So what point do you get the seven percent tacked on?
You get the seven percent tacked on after the fifteen every month.
Okay. And then after that, no, no deposit if you get cut off?
Usually, if they don't pay that bill, the deposit they have down goes towards them. So you know that, to pay a no deposit, they lose that deposit. Yes.
So they have to, they still have to.
If they lose that deposit that they have that don't pay the bill on time?
So they get cut off, they still have to pay the hundred fifty dollar deposit?
Yeah.
Let me clarify, clarify one thing. If someone has a deposit down today, let's say from five years ago, and they default by not paying, we do not apply that hundred fifty dollar deposit until we final bill, meaning they've been disconnected, and they're terminated, and they're not coming back. We assume they're not coming back. So we don't recoup. That's, this is why the policies are there. We will lose a large chunk of that electric bill that they default and don't pay. So the, when someone reaches that cutoff status and have to pay a second deposit, we're essentially ensuring against the risk that this is going to happen, because they've been disconnected once before, right? They get to this cutoff, we're going to collect the deposit, which goes toward their final bill in the future. So now they've got a three hundred dollar deposit.
Right. If they, let's say hypothetically, now you have a three hundred dollar deposit. Let's say you move to another location, get a brand new account, that three hundred dollars goes back to the customer.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they, as long as everything is in.
That's right. It goes toward their final bill ultimately, at whatever point they come up with.
Councilman Cullors, just so I'm clear, the seven percent you're saying add back on would apply only to people who are late paying their bill, or are you talking about adding seven percent across the board for all electric accounts?
Seven percent is already there.
That's already.
That's a late charge.
Right. That's already, what Councilman Cullors is saying is, right now, on the, up to the fifteenth, you just owe what the bill amount is for the usage.
Okay.
On the sixteenth, from the sixteenth through midnight on the twenty-first, that's considered the delineable period.
Right.
That seven percent is already there. We don't need council action on that. It's already there. On the twenty-second is when you enter cutoff status, and that's when that second phase of the, of the policy kicks in, where they're going to have to put down a new deposit.
New deposit, yeah.
And they one, at one time, fifty-five dollar down.
Right, right, right.
So his request, if I may, I'm just trying to summarize it, his request is to drop off that, that penalty at the end, once they've been disconnected.
Yeah. Because we will be losing money every month for the hundred fifty and the fifty-five.
In, in my opinion, the progress we've made will start to lose, because it will reward the customers who are on the bubble and not paying their bill on time, to, to go back to that habit. Right now, it's gotten better. It's gotten a lot better.
And I agree, and I, I agree on that part, because I merely come up with that policy. But it, we're hitting people that don't need to be paying a hundred fifty dollars and fifty-five dollars. I have some constituents that paid, the first time on the cutoff list, and they had to pay that. They got that on.
The policy, I have to live with the policy that this council approves. I can only tell you that my recommendation is, we don't need to abandon the policy that's working right now. I respect, we, we've had good, very pleasant conversations. We can argue and still have lunch, and still work through this. I feel very strongly, we, we would be, it would be a huge mistake to abandon the progress we've made up to this point. And the number of people that come through my office, and one will be at my office tomorrow morning of another appointment, we make very special arrangements for those exceptions that do happen. There's a death in the family, there's something extenuating circumstance, and we will do that one time, one off, to work with somebody, and not cut them off. But as a policy as a whole, the frequent flyers that this policy was meant for have dramatically curtailed, and they are paying the bill on time. Imagine that. They're just paying the bill now. So what I am seeing is, quite frankly, and Councilman Cullors, you know what I know, a lot of those names we see at the tail end of the month that are on what I'll call the platinum level frequent flyers. A good number of those are getting energy checks and assistance that were not paying the bill with it. And instead, they were shorting the city and doing something else with those funds. And the city shouldn't have to carry the burden now. And that's just, and we can, we can agree to disagree, and I respect your opinion, I respect the view you have. I'm just asking, can we please keep the policies in place that we have? But any further discussions, Councilman?
Maybe just a point of clarification. I'm reading Councilman Cullors' agenda item, where it talks, it says to state the exact motion for abatement. I think this is the confusion. It says, motion to charge seven percent on all electric bills, take away one fifty and fifty-five dollars. Point is, that is already there. That's the seven percent late fee. If you don't pay it by the twenty-first, you're paying an additional seven percent. That's there.
Already there.
Fifteen. And what Jerry, what Jerry's saying about a dramatic increase, excuse me, decrease in the number of people on the cutoff list this month was how many, Jerry?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, and it's been as high as how many in the past couple of years?
Several hundred.
So it's proof positive that these, these penalties that we have established now for two, three years are working. And it boils down to making good decisions to pay your bills first, especially if you're getting additional monies to pay a particular bill, and that's the utility bills. We all wish they were lower. We're doing everything we can to make it lower across the board. So certainly, I concur with our city administrator that we have policies in effect that are, are working, and he recommends we don't change them, and I certainly support that.
Just one short comment on that. Definitely, the administrator, we have talked about it also, Councilman Cullors, but we still have a number factory that, the reason I support it, because we have single parents who really are trying their very best to keep things going. So I know personally a couple of parents who have just intentionally said that I'm not going, I'm not able to pay, not that I don't want, I'm not going to pay, I'm not going to pay my bills so I can make sure my children eat or have a place. So that, for that reason, we, we're at a crossroads on that, and I think that we've got to look, how are we talking about homelessness and trying to make the community indebted? And so there's still a pocket of people who are doing from day to day and not just from month to month. So that's why I support that.
Councilman Cullor, uh, Houghton?
Yes, sir, Mayor. My thing is that, whatever the policy is, I feel that everybody should be held to the policy. I don't think that we should be picking and choosing one way or another who get cut on, who, who get cut off, who get the penalty, who will help, who will get their money back. I just, like all of y'all, received a letter from a constituent, Mr. Harvey, great guy, known him all my life, was my granddaddy, banking was my granddaddy was living. But, you know, Mr. Harvey's an older, he's an older guy. He, you know, in his letter, he stated he actually just forgot. And he was caught into that fifty-five dollars and that hundred and fifty dollar fee that, you know, everybody else get caught in. And, you know, that same, back in June, Councilman Cullors brought it up, there was some argument about it. We went back to what the old policy was, which was, you can leave no money on your bill, regardless of who you are, you was going to, if you get caught into it, you're going to have to pay it. But guess what? When this came across, Mr. Harvey got his money back. Now, some of these single parents that Reverend Hill was talking about, and I know, I don't know if y'all got the phone, but I have one blowing off the hook. Some of them owe nineteen dollars on their bill, and got caught into that fifty-five, a hundred and fifty. So my thing is just reality. You know, if you, if you want to say everybody has to pay the bill, everybody got to pay it. But what we should be doing is picking and choosing. And we should, when we run that cutoff, and that cutoff is on the twenty-second, if you ain't treated up your bill, if you cutting off people in District One, District Two businesses alike, everybody should be getting cut off. I think we're dodging a lot of this, but I do want to make one more point. So under the recommendation of our city manager, which was probably a good thing, he sent a letter to Mr. Stuckey and was asking that those utility checks don't go to the, um, clients, that actually comes back to the city. Pretty much just like Washington Heights does, what Ms. Zena's arranged. The people qualify for whatever relief that they get, she brings that money up there, it's applied to their bill. So majority of the ones who have been on that, that cutoff list, when those checks start to come, because they're not, no longer is going to be going to them, it's going to be coming to the city, that's securing a lot of the bills that are not being paid by all our cities, these bodies right here. Whatever policy that you adopt, stand on it. And we got the whole city hall accountable to administering and doing the cutoff. Let's not pick and choose who we're going to leave on, you know, it can be Mary Matt down the road. If she ain't paying her bill, she can cry, 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 but we got to treat everybody the same. We can't just pick and choose how we're going to do.
Fortunately, we do that.
So Mr. Jack Harvey got his money back.
No, actually, Mr. Jack Harvey didn't follow the instructions he was given to begin with.
Well, however, he paid his bill on time. His bill, that, that bill was not paid at the time we ran cutoff.
That's correct.
His power was cut off, too.
And his power was cut off, and he was in vice.
Yeah.
And because, and because the policy works fairly for everybody, now that you've opened that up, it did apply fairly to everybody, because he had no history of slow pay. And every, and in that case, we give them a one, one good grace.
No, 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 no.
Oh, yes, we, oh, yes, we have.
That's not the policy though, Jerry.
Absolutely.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say on that right, we're going to give you.
Yes, actually, it does.
We just.
It is in the code.
We just had that argument at the last city council meeting, when Council, that's how Councilman Cullors got to the seven percent. Because this body voted against giving the pass to the first person who forgets to pay their bill as a courtesy. That's how we got there.
The code says that it is in the city administrator's, it has an exception that occurs, and that's what happens.
So do you go by the code, or you go by the policy?
Both.
See, now, see.
And they're both compatible, and they're compatible.
All right, it's time, I think it's time to bring this to a vote. All right, I'd like to bring this matter to a vote. All in favor of Councilman Cullors' motion to, just if I got this straight, will take, take off the seven percent.
Basically, to take off the one fifty and the fifty.
Everything else would really. Take off the one twenty, one twenty. Okay, all right. All in favor of Councilman Cullors' motion to eliminate the one fifty penalty, the one fifty-five reinstatement of deposit fee, is that right?
Yeah.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Three show of favor, all opposed. Let me get the names, just so we're straight on this. So it's Councilman Cullors, Councilman Houghton, and Councilman Hill. Okay. All right, all opposed to the motion. All right. Okay, gathered. And, all right, and I'm going to have to break the tie on this one.
You don't have to.
That's right, it doesn't pass. That's right, it doesn't pass. All right, so the motion doesn't pass, so we'll move on to, to next. And let, let me say this. This is probably the fourth month now that we've discussed this very topic. We're not going to discuss it again, not, not this year.
Excuse me. According to the attorney, I can bring this topic back to hell freezes over. You can't deny me my confidence.
We, we will, we will check.
You can't do that, because y'all set the precedent when y'all did it twice with Anderson. You're not going to do that. It'll be on next one.
We will, we will check Robert's rules of order, which apply to our setting, and will follow any sense. All right, any, let's say to the, Councilman Cullors?
Yes, we're down to the street cleaning.
Okay.
Your, your first time meeting for council member?
Oh, yeah, meeting for council member. Last month, was it last month meeting? We met at City Hall. Is that when we met?
That was.
Yeah. Last month, they spoke in here at six o'clock, but we met at City Hall. And we get to last minute and knows that we're meeting at City Hall. But councilmen could not attend that meeting at six o'clock. Wouldn't told to the council. Who couldn't attend that meeting at six o'clock?
Wasn't that the June meeting? That was meeting.
You couldn't attend?
No.
So that's why we changed the meeting to twelve o'clock.
I'd ask the mayor, if he didn't mind, change it to a different time, yes. Which I don't understand. I mean, that's, yeah, that's what happened.
But y'all did that for a reason, isn't that correct?
What's that?
You changed the meeting to twelve o'clock so you have a vote on the minister.
So I can attend, I ask him out of courtesy as a colleague to, to change. There's nothing that's wrong with you.
You don't miss a lot of meetings. And my thing is that there was no excuse for the matter of excuse. It's a meeting for the public, and the money that we're supposed to have a meeting. To change it for your convenience, that's not right.
That's your.
He just signed the precedent for that. So next time a councilman, this one, has to change the meeting, a mayor, if you deny that, we're going to have a problem, because right, once again, you can't do that, to change.
We'll deal with that at the time.
No, you changed the meeting because you wanted to vote on the minister. No, you changed the meeting because you wanted to vote on the minister salary to get the vote. Is that not, was the vote three three, you broke it?
I don't even remember, but.
You don't remember? That's exactly what it was, and that's not right. I want the public to understand one thing, is that we gonna work together or not work together, can't do one person one way and the other person in different way. We're sixty-two percent majority in this town, we get the lack of what's going on here, this is not right. I don't want to voice that, that shouldn't happen, just like we got a council setting up here, shouldn't be setting up here, that shouldn't happen, but no, we gonna look over that, it's gonna come around again. It's gonna come around again.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to know his excuse why he couldn't make the six o'clock meeting. No, if he's, if you changed, I need to know, you just ain't gonna change the meeting and we don't know.
You're starting to get along if you forgot. You're sitting up here berating everybody, you wanna get along.
I asked you why did you change the meeting?
Come on, man.
Why did you change the meeting, what you had to do?
It's none of your business. Out of order, Councilman Cullors.
It's not out of order.
Well, you're out of order, we're stopping this. All right, anything else?
That's the point I'm saying, so the people that run for election here, you gonna get the same thing every time.
All right, let's move on. I think we're, I think you done, Councilman Cullors on that.
No, I got streets.
Stick pain, all right, what do you wanna say about the stick pain? Go ahead.
We got nine streets that's not service. Bushes is right up to the road, Alabama Street, Ashley Avenue, Hill Street, Jackson Street, Councilman Hornet Street, Old Scottish Road, Peachtree Street, Garden Street, and also right in front of the entrance of Dollar General here on Mercer Street. It, it's looked ridiculous, and I know they shouldn't look like that. Grass is this hot going into the entrance. And for some reason or another, I need, we need to check, why do they close that store early on Mercer Street, and why the grass is not cut, because it looks, it look really terrible. It's just respect of the, you go on Robert Toon, it's not like that, they open, what's the reason, do anybody know? I'm, I called the manager myself.
I live on Robert Toon, so I cut my grass outside my.
So you helped us with some jokes, I said the store, you cut that store up there, the grass, you cut, you cut Dollar General grass up there? See, that's what I'm saying, y'all think this is a joke, but it's gonna come back to you.
That's a great, make your point of clarification here, I think what you're talking about is the, what used to be the old Almar Building, is there across from J and J?
No, then I said Dollar General, going into entrance of Dollar General, the grass is this hot.
The Dollar General.
And I know the street departments will be cutting the grass.
Is it not their property or their rights?
Dollar General.
It's all Dollar General property?
There we go.
I'm asking, that's, that's the line.
The roadways gonna be, how many feet?
You don't cut.
Have you measured that feet? It's, it's come to us, but nevertheless, I, I will check with the manager of Dollar General. But the other street, uh, bushes are rolled up to the road, they need to be taken care of. Nine streets, eight streets, that's all my topic, we'll deal with it next month.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I had one comment, we have a public works committee, Councilman Cullors and Councilman Dannerd serve on that committee, and it's, um, August fourteenth, and this is the first I've heard of this, city halls open Monday to Friday, eight to five, and that's the time to take care of these things. I don't mind it. We were in a truck together today looking at streets.
I'm gonna tell you why I brought that up.
Not one time.
You gonna tell you why I brought that up?
I'm gonna suggest, if I may finish, and then I'll be glad to listen to you. We have these committees in place so that we can receive good feedback that needs to be had. Citizens bubble up feedback to you, it makes its way to the committee, then we sit down with that department head, and that's where we raise those issues. And it's only fair to our department personnel that we give them that opportunity for us to work as a committee to address those, and then if we're not happy, then we'll come back and make apology changes. But the night of the meeting like this, this is not the right way to go back.
Well, it's the right way, I'm gonna tell you why, because I gave y'all street, Old Scottish Road that I stay on, that y'all planned that the city don't own the right away, that you didn't finish cleaning up, and you said it's the landowner, it's not, you got no other record to show me different, because I already checked.
I, I will repeat again what we said six times between then and now, we're not taking city crews and going up in people's private yards to cut their bushes because somebody doesn't like the looks of it, two doors up from their house, we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna do that. Let me be real clear, we are not using city personnel to cut the bushes in any of your yard, my yard, their yard, we're gonna stay in the city right away.
Not listening, blowing to the city.
From the center line of the road was twenty-five feet, and we cut out twenty-five feet, we're not going thirty feet or thirty-five. That belongs to that landowner, and we showed you that.
In other words, that y'all give fines, the total goes out for folks not cleaning up their property.
That is a shrub that he's entitled to have, we can't make you cut it because you don't like to see it.
Since we don't have the deed here to show one way or another, what the property line is at? Could that department, who you guys sit on that board, could y'all look at that?
We did.
Okay, y'all, okay.
And, if I may, I went out there myself and measured it, we sent the code official out there and measured it, we pulled a copy of the survey and went out and measured it, then we pulled the landowner plat and measured it, we are not cutting on somebody's private yard, end of discussion.
All right.
Yes, question please. I would like to name those streets that you have looked at.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and look at them. Alabama Street, Ashley Avenue, Hill Street, Jackson Street, street that Councilman Hornet live on, Old Scottish Road, Peachtree Street, Gordon Street, and the entrance to Dollar General. Now, take your bet stay by them, because those streets, the bushes have rolled up to the road. But they doing the job.
Well, just a comment?
Yes.
Go ahead. Questions on this before, with some of our constituents concerned about the curb appeal of the appearance of a lot of the streets in Washington where the pavement meets the granite curb, and that is the response once, and then the little grass strip between it, that's responsibility of the property owner. One of the factors that has been contributing to this, and discussed this with the city administrator, is we've had over the years, to some people's perception, is that it's worse now than it used to be. Part of that factor is you have less property owners and more renters at those, and it's probably not very well understood by a lot of the citizens, that it's their responsibility to do that, or whoever you have, you have, whoever's responsible for that, for that, that yard maintenance. Then you get into the sides of the streets that I think you're talking about, some of them don't have the curbs, and then you get into what Jerry just explained, this particular case, they've looked at it every, every, from several different perspectives, and determined that that particular case did not warrant going outside of the right of way, which makes sense. So, now I don't see what the issue is, other than the, that the committee will certainly take a look at it, and applaud Councilman Hill, let me go look, and we'll, and discuss it, but I'd just like to give a show of support to all our departments, especially the street department, because I have taken an interest, I tell you, they're out there from, where are we going now, at six in the morning, or starting at?
Six to three.
Yeah, six to three, and, and how many row, how many, eighty-something miles of road, up streets?
We have a hundred and sixty-eight streets in town, forty miles of road, and just so that we don't leave people with the impression that Councilman Cullors and I argue all the time, there are a lot of things we agree on, and today we rode around and had a great time looking at a street sweeping machine that I think we all largely understand would be a huge value to our city, and it does address something we wanted to do to more efficiently clean our streets from center line to curb, and then while we use code enforcement to simply not pick on people, just ask them to live up to the code, keeping their yards beautified out to the street, and I think that's gonna be a huge help down the road. I think on that we can agree. I was gonna make one little point, I was just gonna, I was, uh, want everybody, they should definitely consider the importance of the street department and the work they have out in front of them. I mean, with all this rain and heat, they are, is all they can do is to keep out in front of everything that they already have, and it's just, you know, I don't know that particular property Mr. Cullors was talking about, but you have to have a line somewhere where we stop, and the property owner's responsible. If not, they won't have an opportunity to, to do their job, and, and, you know, it's, you know, out of every department, they have the most work out in front of them, ask them.
I requested.
And they do, and John Barnett, by the way, I'll throw his name, has done an excellent job at the street department, phenomenal.
I think we need to move on.
I requested that the total go and give the landowner, if that's moving property, a citation, because it look bad. So I'm not just picking on one person, uh, the whole situation.
If the, if the shrub violate code, he can absolutely.
Well, I have been to do what I need to do.
Okay. All right, let's move on, I think we're, city administrator topics next?
I only have one, Mr. Mayor, and it's really a county topic, but what we're really asking is the, uh, the county is our, the handler of our city waste, right? We don't have a landfill anymore, we carry our garbage to them, and then they transfer it to Wyandotte, Georgia, so they are our agent, and the county is renewing their permit for solid waste, so we're in essence saying, unless we wanna get in the landfill business, we want them to continue doing what they're doing with no change, the same deal that we have in place today, we're simply extending it out, uh, another, I believe it's ten years, and that's my recommendation. By the way, the town of Rail and, uh, Tigno have already adopted it as well.
You made a motion.
To adopt a second.
Yeah.
Second, second.
Question.
And just to be clear, there's gonna be the rates there?
No change.
Right, okay, great. All right, the motion debate in second, can I have a vote? All in favor, please show your hand. I'll pass unanimously. Anything else, Mr. Administrator?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, good.
I need to ask the administrator something.
Any, any extra session on that?
No, no. Uh, being that the sheriff department's done an excellent job with the, and with the money that we give them, have we had our police department, a little bit more, that's correct, a thousand, a million or more, right? My suggestion that the next minute, I'm gonna recommend that we give them over half, five, because they're doing an excellent job doing the thing that they're doing, because I see it, and I see something is doing correctly.
Are you making that donation out of your funds?
No, no. We had a city police, we had a city police department, that's what we will be telling about me. That's my, that's my point. They done the job, well done, but I still have a problem with the store that had got security.
Let me ask, I'll, I'll ask it this way, we're, we're all aware of the store where the shooting occurred, we've tried to work with that store owner, and going back to an agreement that the city had in place over ten years ago, where there would be a store security assigned at peak times, that had somehow lapsed before we all came to working together. We instituted that, and if we, I, I guess, with the part that we're all in agreement with, is we're not, we don't want to, and we're not trying to, and we have no desire to put any legitimate business on, out of business, that is never an intent. But if there's the watering and the continuous presence of crime and problems at that one location, we do have the ability to declare the public nuisance, and we can shut it down that way. But if we start with the solving it at the lowest possible level, we first sent a letter with the help of our city attorney, we drafted a letter that basically said, let's get back to the agreement you already have. I personally met with the store owner, and he agreed to that. Uh, within a few days, I will say, he notified me that he had his, his cert, his store security, we found out, actually, it was not in the spirit of what we want, we need someone certified in stores insecure, and that wasn't the case. We since notified him of, you're gonna need to have somebody with the proper certification for store security. That was two weeks ago. I spoke with him this morning, and I said, how are we coming with that? Because, again, trying to work with you, and I think the bottom line is, he hasn't made it a high priority because we haven't pushed him further, and I, and so what I advised him was, he has until noon Wednesday of this week to provide for me the name of that person and a copy of their certificate, or I will exercise the next option, and I don't wanna go there, and that would be to pull the liquor license for ten days, and that would be an inventive step, it's not permanent, but it would basically be to say, during this window, you still have time to comply, and in which time we'll reinstate it, and if not, then I'm coming back to this council, and only you would have the authority to actually revoke the business license and shut the business down. But, and, and I'm optimistic, it's not gonna come to that, in fact, I'm confident it's not, because I think once he, now, now he knows we're, we're really serious about, that's gotta be, that needs to become the safest spot on Whitehall Street, whereas it has been probably the most dangerous two hundred feet in this town, I want it to be the safest spot on, on Whitehall Street. And, and he hears me loud and clear, and I believe we're gonna see a compliance with that, so that, that's where we are.
Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Before we proceed to, um, Jerry, there was an email that was sent out by Reverend Wild, and I think she sent it to you, Mayor, but I think that it bounced back, I think she had an old email.
She didn't have a right address.
I don't know, but now you got the new, that email, the text, but what Reverend Wild described was, she has a piece of property, and there was a dog that was on a property that evidently somebody walked by, it was in the woods or whatever they did, but they shot the dog, and he, he killed, killed the dog. So that kind of, it bothers me, and I'm gonna take the reason why it bothers me.
It bothers us.
Because if you got somebody that's walking by and shooting an innocent dog, or that could be somebody standing on their back porch, that could be somebody getting out their car, and, you know, we still must caution ourselves, because there still has been two other shootings that has happened since we had the police department, you know, you know, in operation that we funded, um, one in Washington Heights, and I think that they acted very swiftly, um, doing their job in investigating that incident, and then the other, then there was another incident as well. So I do wanna say, like me and, you know, Councilman Dannerd, um, maybe the recommendation was getting the, uh, police department having something in place, it's better than not having nothing in place, but we still must be adamant, you know, about what we're gonna be doing to combat, you know, gun violence in our community.
Mr. Mayor, may I add a comment here?
Well, yes, I, I, 'cause I wanna, let's talk, I wanna talk about the flock cameras and that, that.
Kind of related to that.
Please, go ahead.
So, as a piggyback on this whole conversation, I forwarded all of you some of the initial reporting that the sheriff's office is now providing us, the recall, response, and what they are saying, and I, I take this as all very encouraging, the sheriff, Jerry Hackney, Thomas Bailey, Adam Posey, they're all saying, we can tweak this report, just tell us the kind of data you'd like to see, and we can specialize in reporting. So what you got is kind of high-level numbers, but just to give you an example, when I met with him, he hands me this, it's about fifty, sixty pages, and this is one thirty-day span of every call that they responded to, every stop, every whatever, all the detail, where they were, what street it was on, what the incident was about, that's the level of detail they're collecting, so just know that if, if any one of these really pops with you, and you really need to know the detail specifics, they can get down to that level, but what they're trying to do for us is take all of this and distill it down to about a one-page summary, just give us the high point of what we're getting for this extra funding, but they're able to go into a lot of detail if we need it.
Tell, tell about the, these, uh, these acoustic locator devices, what tells?
So the flock, the flock cameras, and by the way, they, when we met with them, the sheriff, it's probably been three weeks ago now, had a room full of all of his top staff, and every one of them had said the flock cameras were a valuable tool, they have solved some, some key crimes directly as a result of our cameras. Uh, in fact, they, they mentioned one, that within seconds of the shots fired, they already had it on the camera and, and knew the subject they were after. So I think what we're seeing is, we have provided, to your point, we've provided an expensive tool to the sheriff that's now in their toolbox, and they're starting to really use it, right? And the troopers are too. They're adding another capability now, where the alerts that the cameras themselves send out will naturally now start going directly to each of the deputies on patrol, so they're in their vehicle, and now instead of waiting on a call from dispatch, it'll ping them while they're in their vehicle, you know, shot fired on Alabama Street or whatever. Uh, so now there's, there's another wave of product that, that we're looking at, that same company that does the tag rears has a gunshot detector device, and it's about the size of a, um, twenty-ounce Coke can, it's about that size, and it's a sound detector, they lay out a grid, if there's a. They lay out a grid, if there's a particularly sensitive area, and let's just say, for example, we know the money we're paying to the sheriff, we've asked him to concentrate the patrol in what we all know as District One, plus the, sort of the southwest urban redevelopment district, if you kind of look at it that way. But they're doing, they're patrolling citywide, but real concentration in that area. They can blanket that area with these gunshot detection devices that mount on a pole, and when it hears a gunshot, it triangulates between the three or four nearest, um...
Location.
Locations, and it triangulates to within eighty to ninety feet of where the shot originated, and it automatically alerts nine-one-one, it doesn't wait on a human to call in. So, let's just say that two AM, somebody shoots, maybe somebody wakes up and is asking themselves, was that a shot I heard? I don't know, should I call? Maybe I shouldn't call? Well, by that point, that car could be another mile down the road shooting again. The gunshot detector hears it and immediately sends a waypoint to the dispatch that says shot fired, uh, approximately this location, so that that GPS coordinate then gets sent